Good afternoon. We will get started with the June 10, 2019 Salina City Commission Meeting. Ask for a roll call, please.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Haye, Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here. For all of us who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of June 2019, as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Salina, Courtney Train, youth advocate mentor for D-VAC, will read the proclamation.
Hello, good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hi there.
So whereas according to the National Council on Aging, one in teen seniors in America experiences mistreatment or abuse, including domestic and sexual violence, financial exploitation and neglect, because these incidents are vastly under-reported due to shame, fear and other barriers, only a limited number of victims are able to get the help that they need. Too often elder abuse, neglect and exploitation threaten the livelihoods of older individuals. They erode their extraordinary potential and increase their risk of death by 300% compared to seniors who have not been mistreated. Whereas abusers of older adults are both women and men, and they're usually family members, caregivers, healthcare workers or other trusted individuals. Whereas legislators in all 50 states have passed some form of elder abuse prevention laws, including laws against physical and sexual abuse, neglect, abandonment and exploitation such as the illegal taking or misuse or concealment of funds, property or assets of a senior for another's benefit. And whereas elders throughout the United States lose an estimated $2.6 billion or more annually due to elder financial abuse and exploitation, D-VAC has served 23 victims just last year of elder abuse. Salina's vulnerable and older population includes all social, economic, racial and ethnic backgrounds, and they all may be targets of abuse, neglect or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care facilities and communities. The establishment of Elder Abuse Awareness Month will benefit older people, their families, health services and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation or ethnicity. Whereas we all have a responsibility to support the safety, welfare and dignity of Salina's vulnerable older adults. Whereas Salina must work towards creating and ending elder abuse by assisting victims and accessing the information and supportive services that they need, creating better and more resources for older adults in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies and engaging in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of this quiet epidemic of elder abuse. Now, therefore, the city of Salina Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 2019 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Salina and urges all citizens to work together to help promote and protect older adults from abuse, neglect and exploitation because it's imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elder abuse.
Thank you. Just curious, when someone suspects elder abuse is occurring, do they come to you to comply?
Yeah.
And where does that go as far as the criminal justice system?
I suppose if you suspect elder abuse, you should call Adult Protective Services, which is a part of DCF, and they would go investigate the claim. So D-VAC, we're more of a supportive role, so if the victim or family members of the victim needs support, either making a report or just getting help, we've had a lot of older people stay in our emergency safe shelter if they're able to take care of themselves, helping them get into assisted living or just create a safety plan. But yeah, if you suspect it, then just call Adult Protective Services.
Thank you. Are there any other educational activities this month?
Yes, so on Friday, June 28, the last Friday of the month, I'm hosting a luncheon learn for elder abuse to learn more about it, to learn about its warning signs, the tactics that abusers might use and just how to help someone who might be experiencing this or prevent elder abuse altogether. So that's at the public library downstairs in the Prescott Room. So again, June 28 from 12 to 1:00 p.m. at the library. And then we'll post like information on our social media this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. I'll be on, not KSAL, the other one, K-I-N-A Radio, to talk with Dave Ford about elder abuse as well, so tune in there.
All right, thank you. Come forward, I'll give you the signed proclamation.
Thanks, Travis. Here's what anyone else would like.
Sure.
Share some friends.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move to the Citizens Forum. It's an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to address the commission for an item that's not on the agenda. I would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. So we have a focused audience here again today. We have no public hearings, we can move to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 3, 2019.
That's short, kind of hard to remove that.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve Consent Agenda Item 6.1.
Second.
Okay, move and approve to approve our minutes from June 3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to nothing. Administration.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 19-7714, authorizing the offering for sale of water and sewer system revenue refunding bond series 2019, including the approval of a fiduciary agreement for municipal advisory services specific to this revenue bond refunding action with George K. Baum.
Ms. Beck.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This issue has a lot of history, so I'll try to go over it, summarize it for you, just so that you have an idea of where we've come from or how we got to where we are. Basically, our financial advisors look at bonds that we've issued to determine whether we can recognize some savings by refinancing those bonds. And typically, they look for an average of 3% to 5% before it becomes cost-effective for us to do that. The bonds that we can refund are callable bonds, and that means that a bond typically has a maturity date, say like in 2030, and that bond might have a feature that says, if you want to, you could call that bond in 2020. So if that does occur, then we are able to do that and take advantage of that and maybe refinance that and take that money and set it aside to pay those off until they become callable. So these particular bonds were issued in 2011 for a face value of $16,120,000, and they were revenue bonds, which means that the payment for these bonds were going to come out of the Water and Sewer Fund. They were on a 20-year repayment schedule. The average rate of the bonds was 4.36%. In mid-year 2017, with the help of our advisors, George K. Baum, we determined that we could recognize some savings if we refunded these bonds, if we pre-refunded these. We thought at that time we could save about $500,000 to $1 million. So at that time, we went out for a bid, did a request for proposal, because with revenue bonds, it's a little bit different about how you sell them. And our intention was to get an underwriter to go out and sell those for us. At that time, we received eight bids, and based on qualifications, the approach to the sale and fees, Hilltop Securities was selected for the underwriter of that refunding back in 2017. They were selected because we felt like they were pretty aggressive in marketing our bonds, that we could recognize some savings over some of the other competitors. After the proposals were received, we recognized that the city was not going to be able to get their 2016 audit done in time for the bonds to go out for sale, and the underwriter wasn't comfortable without that information going out. So the city decided to postpone it, and in the meantime, the IRS changed the rulings on pre-funding bonds. So as of 12/31/2017, we could no longer pre-fund callable bonds, which means that we couldn't go out and refund bonds before they actually matured with their call date. So if the call date was October of 2019, we could not refund those till October of 2019. The IRS made that decision back in 2017. So these were kind of put back on the shelf, and the city decided we'd just wait until they became callable and we'd review it again. So this year, earlier this year, again, George K. Baum did some evaluation and determined that the interest rates were favorable and that we could probably recognize the savings of a little over $1 million on these bonds if we did go out and refund them. At this time, the city, we have a couple of options that we've been, that George K. Baum's brought forward to us. Because we've already selected an underwriter, we had the choice to go back to that underwriter and say, it's the same bonds, we're going to do the same thing, we'd like you to tell us if you would live up to your proposal that you gave us, or we could go out for another RFQ and select another underwriter. So basically, where we're at right now is that we have Hilltop, who we have already selected as an underwriter, or we have to go out for an RFQ. The action doesn't have any cost to us. There will be some cost of issuance, but that will be absorbed in the savings, in the million-dollar savings that we anticipate getting. You've got, in your package, you received all of the past information from the RFPs to the selection evaluation, to the original blue sheets and all that information. So at this point, we have a few options for you. We can approve Resolution 19-7714, authorizing for sale the Water and Sewer Revenue Refunding Bond Series 2019, including the approval of a fiduciary agreement with Municipal Advisory Services specific to this revenue bond refunding action with George K. Baum, and select Hilltop Securities as the underwriter for the bonds. Second option is you could approve the resolution and direct staff to go out for an additional RFQ to select a different, possibly the same one or a different underwriter for the bonds. You could postpone consideration of the resolution to a specific date and time and provide staff with direction regarding additional information. Or you could choose not to approve Resolution 19-7714, resulting in the city not refunding these bonds and not recognizing the savings at this time. I do have Roger Edgar from George K. Baum with us tonight if you have any technical questions, and I hope I gave you enough information there, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions?
You gave me, yeah, I have plenty of information here, so thank you very much. But I have a couple of questions that I think predate both your history here and mine, and that is in terms of the original resolution, 17-7477. When did we rescind that resolution? Or did we? I didn't know if that was...
I do not know off the top of my head.
But it was rescinded?
Well, the 177477 authorized the sale of Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds in 2017, so it's not so much that it's rescinded, but that we're refinancing those bonds?
Okay.
And...
I think it gave us authority to go out and do it, but we actually never did it, is basically what that resolution did.
Okay, okay, and I guess, you know, my question is, and, you know, I don't know how many of us were even on the commission at that time, how would the governing body know if that did not come to pass? I mean, you take the action, you pass the resolution, and then...
Once the resolution's passed, then when we go to sell the bonds, we'll come back to you for an ordinance, which is on, as part of our calendar, as you see. We'll come back to you for the first reading of an ordinance and then the second reading of the ordinance, once we actually get to the sale process. There's a lot that happens between now and then, but once we get to that sale process, we'll come back and have an ordinance that pretty much ties down all the details on that.
Got you. So you're expecting, you're expecting us to be on top of it and pay attention to the calendar? Thank you.
That would be the highlighted items on the calendar.
Well, and I did have a question about that, because I think my, I had some issues with the calendar didn't, I didn't get my whole calendar, so...
Well, mine did that too, and I'm going, I have to do that next week?
Yeah.
But it is July 15 will be when it comes back.
Okay. And then just a couple other things. What is involved in terms of cost, both in dollar figures and in staff time of going through the RFQ process to go ahead and get new proposals on this? Just because when I looked through the rubric, it wasn't like that there was a clear winner in that field. As a matter of fact, I think that Hilltop, maybe under one analysis, wasn't the first choice. So what would we be looking at in terms of doing a new RFQ?
I believe that George K. Baum actually did the RFQ for us, so Roger may be able to answer that question better, but I will say, as far as the rubric, there were several different determining factors.
Right.
And they were ranked at each level.
Right.
And Hilltop, well, Hilltop wasn't number one in all of them, and fees was one of them that they were not.
Right.
The information that I got from people that were here then was that their approach to the sale, they felt like that we were going to get better rates and a higher savings by their approach to the sale and their ability to sell them at a lower interest rate.
Thank you.
And my recollection is that that was discussed at the time that that initial decision was made.
And to add to Commissioner Hodges' question, the timeline it would take to do an RFQ and to get it back also.
Sure. So maybe two or three points of clarification on the questions that have been asked. The resolution that was passed in 17, it was virtually identical to the resolution you're considering now. It basically would be an authorization to bring a formal presentation or a formal underwriting commitment back to the commission for consideration at a future meeting. So when the transaction was delayed or basically just pulled from the market in 17, that second step never occurred. So the resolution really wasn't rescinded. It just, it just has sat there for lack of a second or follow-up ordinance action. So it, the commission did take a step in 17 to engage Hilltop, to bring a proposal back, and that resolution wasn't rescinded. That was, you know, that was, kind of went into our thinking about our action here today. I think the Finance Director is correct that there was a, Hilltop was not the absolute low bid on costs, but their interest rate estimates, together with their costs, when you extrapolate it into a savings report, would have given you the best answer. And our experience with that firm is, you know, just anecdotally has been good. They don't, we don't have any history of them performing poorly or in a way that's inconsistent with their, with proposals that they've made. It would, with respect to going through the process again, it would probably create a, I would think, on a fast pace, about a four-week delay. We would have to prepare and redistribute the, a request for proposal, give people, you know, a week to 10 days in a minimum, I think, to give us responses back, go through an evaluation and then get it on the commission agenda at a subsequent meeting. So it, that process would take, I think, at least four weeks, you know, maybe a little longer, but I don't think it could go much faster.
When you say their estimates are consistent, does that mean their interest rate estimates just generally come in where they think, where they give you that number?
That's been our experience in the past. You know, all of these, all of these numbers that you see in proposals are proposals, and they're not guarantees. So we do watch for follow-through, and when we see something that looks, you know, a little, a little too aggressive, you know, sometimes we are, we look at it, you know, versus market, we think, so our experience with this company has been, has been good. I, you know, certainly wouldn't say anything bad. And their, and their performance in this situation, in similar situations, has been, has been good in our experience, so.
Better than the other firms?
Well, better than some of them.
Okay, okay.
The question would be if this matrix that allowed us to choose at that time Hilltop, if we went out and did an RFQ, that could change. You could find a different bond issuer to be beneficial to us at this time, is that correct?
If we went through this again, it could change, it could be the same.
Right.
Yeah, it would just be a new process.
The four-week delay, these are not callable until October of 19. Would that cause us to miss that date to be able to sell the bonds and to...
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think we would still be able to move along. We're able to close and deliver the bonds according to these new guidelines within 90 days of that October 1 date. So that would be, you know, July, August, September, sometime in that, you know, in that timeframe. It might push us back a little bit in that window, but I don't think it would cause us to miss it.
And the reason we didn't proceed with it back in 2017 was because the 2016 audit had not been completed by September of 2017? Is that, that's Hilltop?
That's accurate. That's accurate. The other thing, you know, the good news from all this is that the savings now is better than it was then. I mean, I think being, I always am torn between being an optimist and a pessimist in these situations. If I put my optimist hat on, this is quite a bit more savings that we're seeing today based on the market than what we had back then.
Right, got you. But it was, it was Hilltop as the underwriter that withdrew back, excuse me, in 2017 because of the, not having the 2016 audit? And that's, so that's, that's correct?
That's, that is correct. That is correct, but you know, we were getting that...
I mean, it wasn't, you didn't pull it out, and we didn't pull out, so it was Hilltop.
Yes, that's correct. Now, we were, we were getting similar feedback, you know, from investors. We were trying very hard, as you all may remember, to get the, to work through the, software conversion and working with the auditors and doing things to get, to get those audits delivered. And, you know, we faced the same thing, if you recall, on another issue, you know, subsequent...
That's, that software conversion, yeah, wasn't easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Any, excuse me, questions and concerns from the public? Hearing none. Bring it back up to the commission.
I would, acknowledging that the delay would only be four weeks, I'd love to see us go back out for an RFQ. I don't know how my other commissioners are feeling, but given that it's been a couple of years since we received this proposal and they were relatively close at that time, if we have the luxury of a few weeks, I'd love to see us take another look at that, and maybe it would yield something, maybe it wouldn't.
I'm kind of the same way. You just, you're not sure how some of the different firms would have changed their fee structure or their aggressiveness towards selling the bonds over the last two years. As long as it doesn't create a cost to us or create an issue of us being able to get our proposals back in time to, to sell the bonds, I would, I would probably be for that also. And just one other question. If, excuse me, we, sorry, if we solicit other proposals, where does today's action fall as far as days or weeks after we've selected someone to sell the bonds? This, these would still be two separate actions?
I think we've, I think the resolution is written in that we could change it to go out for an RFQ, if that's your direction, and then, once that process is done, the calendar would be changed accordingly. So it would no longer be coming back on July 15, it would be coming back later than that.
To then basically go through this resolution again?
To bring the results of the RFQ and, yes.
Okay. Because at that point...
We would have to select an underwriter.
They'd come back, give us a recommendation, whether it's Hilltop or whoever, we would at that time approve it, and then they would work with them to...
Move forward with the sale, correct.
Forward with the sale. Okay. So there's a date passed which we would be, we would not want to go before we re-entertain this, just as far as kind of nailing down how much time we should allow for the process to run its course.
If your choice is to go out for an RFQ, we would do, we would start that process pretty quickly and then hopefully get it back to you. As Roger said, we have a 90-day window. You can't get too close to October 1st before you sell those bonds, but it would just delay the calendar for that amount, the amount of time it takes us to get those out, get them back, evaluated, and then bring it back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Want me to take a stab at this? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, so, so based on that, right.
Based on that, option two is what we're looking at.
Based on this, on the calendar, we show closing and delivery of the bonds on August 15. So if we move that back four weeks, we're basically looking at, at the closing and delivery in September, which gives us a month.
Yes.
Isn't part of the question whether the resolution's necessary at this point, or whether we just want to do an RFQ process and bring back the resolution?
I think the city manager makes a fair point. If, if we're going to go through an RFP process, if we're going to reinstitute that process, the, I think we could, we could still do the resolution today, but actually, I'd have to look at it to make sure that we, it excluded any, any references to Hilltop Securities. I think the better part of the, of it would be to go ahead and just delay action today and let us bring the same resolution back to you once we conclude the RFP process. So your, your action today might be a motion instructing us to go through an RFP and bring those results back to you as soon as possible. as soon as possible.
The only reference I see to Hilltop is in one whereas provision. I don't know that it calls them out other than, I'm trying to find it back here.
I just couldn't read it real quickly while on my, on my feet here.
I lost it. I saw it earlier. Yeah, I'm sorry. It is the first one. And it currently reads, whereas the city commission of the issuer hereby selects the firm of George K. Baum and Company as financial advisor and Hilltop Securities as underwriter for a series of system revenue bonds of the issuer to be issued in order to provide funds to refund the refunded bonds.
I think it'd be better, my opinion would be, it would be better just to, to hold off on this resolution until we get it worded properly and let us bring the results of this new process back to you as quickly as we can, and we'll redo the calendar.
So basically, we should just now direct staff to go out for an RFQ to select an underwriter for the bonds?
If that's, yeah, if that's the direction you want to go, that's probably the right step to take.
I guess I'll, with that, Mayor Davis, I move that we direct staff to go out for an RFQ to select the underwriter for the sale of the, or should I say refinance? How do we want to do? Of the, now I got to go back. The two, the refunding of the 2000, Series 2017.
2011.
Or 2011, yeah, that's when we're going to do it, the 2011 bonds.
Second.
Is that motion clear enough to the clerk, so I don't have to repeat that over? Okay, thank you. Any more comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four, nothing.
Thank you.
Item 7.2, resolution number 19-7716, authorizing the mayor to execute a loan agreement with Lee Loff's Partners LLC relating to a loan not to exceed $500,000.
Good afternoon. My name's Matt Gillum. I'm the vice president of development and a partner with Overland Property Group. Pat Beatty, also a partner at Overland, is with me today. So hoping to be able to show you a few pretty pictures and things of that nature as I come and update you and, and proceed with this next step in our process with the Lee Buildings. I'm sure for anybody that's looking from the outside in is thinking, oh my gosh, what is taking so long? Why is this such a long process? Well, you're getting a look into why no one's done this before. The process is cumbersome. It takes a very long time. There's wrinkles as you go through it. But the good thing is, is we're standing in front of you weeks away from the start of construction. So our updates on what's happened since we were here last February, and you guys committed to help us with the funding gap we have to do some market rate units. So since then, we received federal tax credits for housing from the Kansas Resources Corporation in Topeka. Those are federal credits. We've received the federal historic credits for the project. We've completed the building plans from the architects, civil engineers, structural engineers, electrical engineers, all the architects and engineers you can think of. The building permit was approved through the city of Salina. We have gone through contractor and subcontractor bidding. Good to know that there's a lot of local subcontractors that have been chosen to proceed on this project with us. Additionally, we've been going through since probably June of last year, an environmental clearance process, and that is regarding the financing that's involved with the historic credits on this building and other. So it's a very cumbersome process. We have everything from environmental studies of groundwater contamination, lead paint, asbestos. You know, it's really, it's a $50,000 to $60,000 study. Additionally, if there's any rare things like rare bats in the building, which we did find and had to remediate, all of that is encompassing this environmental clearance. And then the government wants you to make extra, extra sure that these have all been taken care of in the proper ways. So all of that has been documented, and our third-party consultants have gone through that process. And the federal government and the state have both considered the, the building environmentally clear and okay to proceed with construction. I can't underscore enough how cumbersome and important that process is, but it has been completed with regard to this specific development. We've received a bank commitment on the construction loan. That's Bennington State Bank, who's here locally in Salina, which is really good news that we were able to find somebody locally that was interested in doing the project. We were able to bring an investor to the commitment table, which is Redstone Equity. They're based out of Chicago, but they have a lot of banks and different people that invest in their funds, and, and that's who has agreed to invest in the Lee Buildings in Salina. So where we're at now is, we are sitting at the finish line, ready to start construction. So the finish line of this portion of the development process and ready to start the next. So we're projecting bank and investor closings June 18th, which is next week, and then we would start construction two days later on June 20th. And that is all contingent upon, obviously, us getting a development agreement with you guys in place. That commitment from you guys was a instrumental part of the state signing off on federal historic and federal low-income housing tax credits. They want to see that commitment, and they want to see that help from the city, but they also need to see that you have all of your financing lined up, and you don't have big gaps in your budget. So with that said, if we start construction June 20th, we are anticipating construction completion and resident move-in, really, the first part of June of 2020, so next year, which would be a really exciting thing. We've already given a lot of tours. We're not even under construction to different groups in Salina that are interested, both young professionals and leadership Salina, et cetera, have all been through it, and very excited. We probably haven't seen this number of people calling our office asking to be on waiting list or interest list, so that's exciting to see. And I think for all of us with downtown Salina, seeing that housing component that is missing come into the picture. And so for Pat and I, and Tony apologized he couldn't be here tonight, but for Pat and Tony and I, I think seeing these buildings take off really gives us confidence in, in building number two and building number three getting done. With regard to that, with these federal historic credits, we do, we were trying to run it as a phased project, and that won't be possible. So we have to wait one calendar year from, with the historic credits, from the, the completion of the first building. So look for us to be pushing really hard on those plans, but we'll start unveiling things for the plans of that building kind of soon after we get this closed. But obviously, all of our attention's been on this because of the process that, that is involved. So that kind of gives you the, the front and back of where we are. I can tell you from a plan's perspective, we're really excited. Things have fallen into place. Anytime you do a historic building, there are gives and takes with the historical folks. So, you know, currently, we're going through, they approve your plan, and then you go through amendments. And so you go through and you try to get an additional piece approved, an additional piece approved. We've gotten everything approved minus. We've got some flooring that we're kind of talking to them about, so, you know, it's, it's kind of that fun process there. But we're really excited about the development, and we feel like it's, it's going to be such a monumentous, gold champion project for the city that they'll be able to look at it and say, you know, that's what helps spur additional market rate housing in downtown Salina and Salina as a whole. Because it's, it's a challenge that, that you shouldn't take lightly. So Pat and I are both here to answer any questions you have specifically about the project or the development agreement that we have worked out wording with the city on.
Thank you. That's an encouraging report. Any questions? Mr. Gillum?
I'm not sure. I don't think this is for Mr. Gillum. This, this might be for staff. We're still in process in terms of approaching the other taxing entities for the, for the revision to the neighborhood revitalization plan?
No, those are actually complete.
They're all complete.
If it'd be helpful, when the time's right, I'd be happy to kind of give you a staff report. But in response to that question.
Yes, they're done.
We, we received their request about a year ago, have processed neighborhood revitalization plan amendments, created a category for projects of community significance, and so this now fits that category and is eligible for a 95% rebate for 15 years.
And the other taxing entities have signed off on this particular project?
Correct. They've signed off on the amendment and the criteria, the amendment of the, the plan. It's not necessary for them to sign off project by project. Once that criteria is established, we administer the, the neighborhood revitalization plan.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that. If each individual, like, project of significance had to then be reviewed by U S D 305, the county, and everybody else. Okay.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't understand your question. We, we went through each of those taxing entities to make the plan amendment, set up the criteria, but it doesn't require their review and approval of each project.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then I was wondering if maybe you could speak to, I hadn't seen the, the CHODO involved before, and, and I see that in the staff report, and I thought maybe you might be able to, to speak to that a little bit.
Sure. So we had gone after some funds additionally in the beginning that, that we did need the CHODO for. And, you know, the state kind of puts you into different bins, and they shuffle you around. And so they did not put us in that bin and put us in kind of a different bin that we did not need CHODO support or involvement with. However, we have been in touch with the CHODO, and they will be involved. And we actually believe they're going to be structured to, they would take this particular loan and then, and then gift it to the project. It's kind of what we're looking at at this stage. Pat, am I right there?
Yeah, potentially. This, this is set up as a loan currently, and the reason we've set it up as a loan is, and it's a non-forgivable loan, so that all the funds come in and we have enough funds to build the project. If it comes in as a forgivable loan or a grant, it's taxable. And we need all the funds in order to build it. So we can't, you know, we need the proceeds so we can build, we can pay the contractor to, to build it out. So there's a possibility down the line, we may want to revisit this, but, but the CHODO's involved as a special limited partner. They will be. They'll be admitted as a special limited partner, and they'll help us with the, the state tax credit equity that comes into the, the project. They'll be involved with that, and they'll have their name on it. And, and I don't know, you know, Melissa, you probably know this, we've been very supportive over the years of the CHODO. They've been partners with us on several deals, including Hawthorne 2. So it just makes sense. They've kind of been at the table the whole time with us, and we're happy to have them as partners. So glad you brought it up.
Absolutely. And I just didn't know if it made sense at this point to have them included in, in the loan agreement at this time that we're, we're looking at today.
Not yet, because, yeah, because we're, we, what we, we can't, we kind of need to get going on this because we have subs who are, you know, getting a little skittish, and we want to make sure we wrap up everything and start construction pretty quick. And so we want to get this in place. That's a requirement of our bank and a requirement of our investor. So that's why we're, but we may revisit this down the line. But this action, you know, gives us the ability to close with our investor, and we can revisit it later. If I'm saying that right?
Yeah, as, as it's currently structured, the, the loan agreement doesn't contemplate the, the CHODO. As indicated in the staff report, that's something that they've talked about and they're pursuing, and if that comes to pass, we can revisit it. But in the interest of timing and the way that it is currently structured, it, it doesn't reference the CHODO as.
But they are involved in the project as special limited partner currently, and they're integral, actually, in making it happen. We, if we didn't have them, some of the state tax credit would, would also have the same issue, so.
All right. Thank you.
Is there a picture show?
It looks like they've got some, some older ones up here. I just, I just had some of the plans. I was going to show you guys what the courtyard and some other things that have been drawn up will look like. Because I know, one thing, one question we always get continually is, what is the courtyard going to look like? Because that's kind of a feature that I think maybe 80% of the people in Salina have their senior pictures taken in. So wanted to show people that, but additionally, the units themselves, how they're going to look. This is an elevator building, so we took a lot of importance in making sure that these are handicap adaptable and handicap accessible units. We, we took great care in making sure the preservation of the historic elements in the building, the wood beams, the first floor, the ten on the ceiling, all of that is being preserved. Again, the amount of consultants and, and people that have looked at that is, is just such a big process. So I just wanted to show that off, but wasn't able to get the pictures going here. So I will send this presentation to them, and they can distribute it to you guys so you can see that update.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, one last question for, for staff. I noticed we had a new copy of the loan agreement at, at the dais today, and I just wondered how that was different from the copy in the packet.
I know there's one clarification is related to the staff report. I believe the staff report indicated an incorrect number of units, but I.
Oh, I got you. Oh, okay.
But the, the loan agreement all along included the correct amount of units. So I'm, I'm not aware of.
About flooring?
Or was it, yeah, was it about the flooring?
Oh, you're correct. Thank you. Yes. As, as Mr. Gillum mentioned, the exhibits initially called out wood flooring, and I think the, the change is that it calls wood or wood appearing flooring now. I'm sorry, I forgot that change. I didn't realize you had a printed copy at your dais. If it would be helpful, when the time's right, I'd be happy to walk you through some of the other factors in the staff report.
Does a project like this create sales taxes on the construction materials?
It can, depends on their tax status in terms of.
It does, yep.
And that will, will that locate to Salina, Kansas?
Yep. Yeah, we pay sales tax on, on materials on the project. So, yeah, it does have an impact. Additionally, the flow of federal tax credits, so for every dollar of federal tax credits, the study has been done that $12.83 of economic benefit flows down to the local economy. So these federal tax credits can be looked at as really a grant. So we're receiving 10-plus million dollars, you know, really in a grant of a lot of different sources that we're bringing to Salina specifically to put into the community. So we do pay full sales tax. I've already heard on the real estate tax. So, so there is an economic benefit to Salina greater than the housing.
To that point, correct me if I'm wrong, Phase 1 is about a $12 million project?
Total development budget, yeah, a little north of that.
And completion date, if everything goes as.
Hopefully, first of June. We would expect to start pre-qualifying residents and kind of doing all of that with management late spring, which, so we typically start that process about three months away from building completion. So we, we again hope first of June that we're open. Hopefully by River Festival Weekend, we get to do a big grand opening, have everybody out, and really show everybody the finished product and get everybody excited. But leasing-wise, I think we're all going to be pretty happy with the result based on what we've heard so far.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? If not, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, if I may.
I'm sorry.
I was waiting to see if there were additional questions or comments to be made by Mr. Skreg. There is one, two aspects of the loan I just do want to be sure is our call to your attention, if I may. The first is, it is what is referred to as a no recourse loan, and as you see, maybe you saw in section 10, the city's interest is subordinate to those, what are referred to as the superior lenders, as you would expect in this type of context, both the borrowing from Bennington State Bank and the Kansas Housing and Resources Corporation. Just a couple of technical points, but want to be sure you're aware of those before you act on the, on the matter.
And then if I could add a couple of things. You may recall, market rate apartments was a priority, had been for quite a while, and, and I think in my tenure, we've developed, dealt with four considerations of this project. So the, the loan agreement also contemplates 53 units with a third of those being market rate. And that's, that's a binding commitment that's factored into the, the loan agreement. I think Mr. Gillum and Mr. Beatty spoke to the structure of the loan, and the staff report spoke to that as well in terms of it being. report spoke to that as well, in terms of it being a non-forgivable loan, and the structure may change depending on the involvement of the CHODO, or, you know, as an outside possibility, there may be some request for forgiveness somewhere around in the future, just depending on the circumstances, but I think it's been a challenge all along, in terms of finding developers that are able to find a way to make it work. If you recall, in February of last year is when you took it up last, and it was actually two action items at that time, the resolution that you passed was a resolution to support for the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation application, and multiple applications had been made to KHRC, this one has been successful, so, I think there might have been some confusion about the nature of that resolution, it was purely just the resolution of support, but then, a second action item on that same agenda was the request for funding, and at that time, the same commission, I think Vice Mayor Davis was chairing the meeting at the time, direction was given to staff to prepare a development agreement for the $500,000 funding request, and as Mr. Gilliam explained, we've kind of been letting them work their process and been in conversation with them about timing and the nature of the development agreement, which ultimately turned into this loan agreement. And then, lastly, at the time that you discussed it back in February of last year, Vice Mayor Davis asked a very specific question of, what would the nature of the loan be, and the response at the time, or what would the condition to that loan be, and I provided a response, and then the developer provided a response, and essentially, my response was that the expectations would be completion of Phase 1, as described, in terms of the number of units which they're committing to, the number of market rate units which they're committing to as part of this loan agreement, and the quality of finish, and their entire set of construction plans are an attachment to this agreement, so, in terms of quality of finish, they very clearly communicated what their intentions are there, and then the developer indicated they would work with us and structure the loan in a way that there were clawbacks, meaning, you know, that those were binding commitments, and I think we've delivered that to you in terms of the loan that's been drafted. So, I could go into a lot more detail, but I think those are the highlights of the direction you gave us over a year ago, and how this loan agreement fulfills that original conversation and direction. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Action to be taken.
Mayor Davis, I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-7716, executing a loan agreement with the Lee Loft Partners LLC relating to a loan not to exceed $500,000.
Second. I move to second it to approve Resolution 19-7716. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0. Thank you. We are now at Development Business 8.1.
Item 8.1, Application Number M19-6, requesting an amendment of the future land use map of Salina, Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change a future land use designation from future conservation area to future commercial on a 6.31 acre tract of land located at the west end of Coach Light Lane, west of North Ninth Street, and south of I-70, and addressed to 635 Coach Light Lane, Item 8.1A, First Streeting Ordinance Number 19-11002.
Mr. Andrew, thank you.
So I'm going to give my report from over here where I can control my graphics, so, this is the first of two items that are interrelated, one is kind of the big picture policy question, the second one is a specific zoning classification request, but an important element of our local comprehensive plan is a future land use map, which was created to serve as a guide to future uses of land within the urban service area in and around the Salina community, and one of the categories that was created for that land use plan was a conservation land use category, and that conservation designation generally follows the mapped hundred-year floodplain areas within and adjacent to Salina that are without levee protection. So if you look at the map on the screen, the areas that are lime green in color are designated as conservation areas, and they are areas that are in mapped floodplains for area streams, but are not protected by our levee system. And then you can see a finger going out North Ninth Street, out to the interstate, where you see the red and the purple colors are areas that were already developed properties, and so those were given a designation that reflected their use at the time the plan was adopted in 2010. And the plan states that it's not intended to be written in stone, there may be circumstances where land use or development goals have changed, and there is a land use map amendment process, and that is the first application that Mr. Roger Bakhtaw has filed. The other thing to note is that the, in the comprehensive plan, it also states that it is anticipated that new commercial development will occur along South Ninth Street between Magnolia and Schilling Road, and also at North Ninth Street and I-70. The question in this case is where should the boundary fall between commercial land use area and the conservation area? So Mr. Bakhtaw is a prospective purchaser of a 6.31 acre tract of land, and it is this property right here that is designated as conservation area, and he has filed this first application to amend the land use designation for this property from conservation area to commercial to match the property directly to the east of it. And so as you can see from the map, the property's adjacent to property that is currently designated as future commercial, Mr. Bakhtaw believes that this site would be attractive to commercial uses that have a desire to be close to I-70. So he has submitted this application requesting approval of an amendment to this map that you see on the screen to show this property is commercial, and that existing commercial, or the requested commercial designation would support his companion application, which is Item 8.2, requesting a zoning change on the property. And so just a little bit of history for this area, this original commercial development out around I-70 and North Ninth Street occurred in the 1970s. In 1986, the City of Salina entered the National Flood Insurance Program, and we adopted for the first time flood insurance rate maps. This area between the flood control levee and I-70 was designated as a floodway. In 2010, when the updated comprehensive plan was adopted, portions of the area between the flood control levee and I-70 were designated as a conservation area, whereas some pre-existing commercial areas were designated as commercial. So you can see on this map that areas that currently have commercial development are shown as red, you have the Boselman's Travel Plaza, Roberts Truck Center, you have the previous motel sites that are there on Coach Light Lane, properties along Ninth are designated as commercial, and as you move away from that developed corridor to the property that Mr. Bakhtaw's proposing to purchase, that is on the other side of the boundary line. At the time that the comprehensive plan was considered for adoption, the planning commission held a number of public hearings, the conservation area was an item of concern for a number of property owners, and one thing that the planning commission recommended was that the original language in the plan be amended from "development shall be prohibited" to "development should be discouraged," and there was also some criteria, and one of the criteria for when a development could or should occur would be if the city has already made investments in utilities such as water and sanitary sewer that are capable of serving a site. The plan certainly discourages the extension of new utilities and roads into floodway areas, but this is a situation where there are already existing utility investments in place. So, in support of his request, Mr. Bakhtaw has highlighted some items, his, he has pointed out that a new hotel is under construction next door on Coach Light Lane, and he believes his commercial development would complement that hotel development. He believes that the new development would further enhance a gateway into Salina. One of the things that we noted was that our support for the old hotels that are being removed and replaced was that they were in a blighted condition, and that was having a negative influence on the gateway into the city at North Ninth Street, and in 2015, when the neighborhood revitalizationary boundaries were expanded, this particular parcel was included within that boundary change. Just for your benefit, the city limit line is right here, and so when the neighborhood revitalization area was amended, it went to the city limit boundary, not to the zoning boundary. Mr. Bakhtaw points out that this site has interstate interchange exposure, and in the past, our comprehensive plans have recognized that interstate interchanges are a resource for the community that should be developed to their full potential. Mr. Bakhtaw believes this is a prominent invisible location next to I-70, and Mr. Bakhtaw has retained the services of a Kansas licensed engineer, and that engineer has performed a no-rise study and concluded that this property can be developed without causing harm to neighboring properties. Staff has reviewed that report, and the report states that sufficient compensatory storage can be created to allow a portion of this property to be developed without increasing flood heights. So it at least appears to be technically feasible to develop this property despite the fact that it's in the floodway. We did want to point out a couple of things, one, the property owner, if he's allowed to develop this property, would have to elevate the floor of any new building to one foot above the hundred-year flood elevation. That elevation is higher than the current elevation of Coach Light Lane, and so there could be a situation here where the improvements are safe and protected from flood levels, but we could have a situation where the properties are elevated islands surrounded by flowing floodwaters from Mulberry Creek, which could trap occupants or hinder emergency response. And at the time that our current floodplain regulations were adopted, there was some discussion about adopting a critical public facilities component that would require streets and roads to be elevated above the base flood elevation, but the commission chose not to include that provision, which was optional in our floodplain regulations. But nonetheless, Coach Light Lane is already constructed, and it is a pre-existing condition, so it's a little late to try to elevate the street at this time. Your role in this case is to decide what you think the preferred vision is for the future development or non-development of this site. It's a judgment call for you whether you think this property is more closely related to the North Ninth Street commercial corridor and the hotel sites, and therefore justifying an amendment to the boundary, or if you think this is more closely related to the surrounding conservation area in unincorporated Saline County. The planning commission conducted a hearing on this request, and at the conclusion of that, they voted 6 to 0 to recommend the change to the future land use designation of this tract, and they gave the following reasons. The site for this, which the amendment is being requested, lies at the very west edge of the commercial corridor and is adjacent to I-70, it's already located inside the city limits and is adjacent to existing commercial development, the city has already invested in extending utilities to the hotel site, and has added this area to the neighborhood revitalization area, and the applicant's engineer has demonstrated that it is feasible to develop at least a portion of this property if compensatory flood storage is created adjacent to Mulberry Creek. So your options as relate to this first question would be to concur with the findings and recommendation of the planning commission and approve an ordinance changing the land use designation of this property from conservation to commercial. You could refer this item back to the planning commission for reconsideration and give the reasons for your disagreement, or you could overturn the recommendations of the planning commission and decide that the future land use designation of this property should remain in place, and make a motion that the ordinance, before you amending the land use map, not be approved. That would require four affirmative votes at this meeting. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have. We have some additional graphics that relate to both items, but this is the land use map as it currently exists, and the request is to move this commercial boundary from here over to this point here. And so with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
And, Mr. Andrew, the hotel that was built, you did state it was also in the floodway.
Yes.
And is there any liability to the city for allowing properties to be built in the floodway?
There is, the liability to the city of allowing buildings to be built in the floodway would be if they were allowed to be built and we didn't follow all of FEMA's and Kansas Division of Water Resources protocols, but we have in that case of that particular hotel, they had a no-rise certificate prepared by a Kansas licensed engineer, they received a floodway variance from the Salina Board of Zoning Appeals, and they also received a floodway development permit from Kansas Division of Water Resources. If you were to act favorably on Mr. Bakhtaw's request, he would have to repeat that same path. It's not guaranteed that he would be successful, that he would get a variance, or that he would be able to get a floodway permit, but what we suggested to Mr. Bakhtaw was that he first needed to come before the planning commission and city commission and get a reading whether those bodies viewed this as developable property before he invested any more dollars into technical engineering studies. So, the difference between this and the hotel site was that the hotel site was already zoned commercial, and it'd already been the site of a hotel historically, this property is not zoned commercial, so for us, this seemed like the first step.
Thank you.
Just following up on the liability question for the city, while we might not have any, like, liability for disregarding, you know, FEMA things and what you cited there, in the event that we were to have a catastrophic flooding event and people were stranded in that hotel, or in all the hotels in that area, would we have an obligation to rescue those hotel guests, or do they remain stranded? I mean, I guess that's a, that would be liability of a sorts, too, in that I'm assuming that we would expect our emergency responders be able to respond to a need for an evacuation?
With respect to the hotel?
Right.
Not this project?
Or with the respect for, respect to any future development in that conservation area.
Right.
If I understood Mr. Andrew correctly, because the elevation of Coach Light Drive is lower than the floodway or the floodplain or whatever, that would render those developments as islands.
Correct.
Cut off from Ninth Street.
Correct, and so you may recall what we went through recently with the storm event.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't always work itself out this way, but a lot of times we'll have an opportunity to anticipate, you know, the river level rising, so one of the primary things that we and Saline County Emergency Management would do would be to try to provide notice in advance, so would be to try to provide notice in advance so that people can get off the island before we have to rescue them. But, to your point, we very well could find ourselves in a swift water rescue situation, or, and we try to anticipate it, see, monitor the water levels rising and advise people to take their own action. But whether it's here or other locations, we find ourselves by way of code red, by way of, you know, other forms of notification, emergency personnel, and then ultimately providing services for those that either get surprised or choose not to heed earlier advice. We do have to render assistance on occasion.
Thank you. And, you know, I don't know, I'm just, I'm kind of on the fence. Obviously, we've done a lot of development in that area that maybe should or should not have happened in that area, and I know that, you know, we've got a pre-existing condition, and I'm just kind of, you know, asking myself if we're not exacerbating a pre-existing condition, but we've always, we've already established a precedent as well, so, anyway, thank you for your response.
Mr. Hoppert?
I asked. Yep. Nothing else?
One question. Could you describe just briefly the nature of the compensatory flood storage?
You looking at me or through me?
Well, probably passed.
Okay.
The idea, and this has been done, this is not unprecedented, it's been done one other time in Salina that I'm aware of and have worked on. Some of you may or may not know that the headquarters where Blue Beacon International is, that is actually also in the floodway for West Dry Creek, and they had a project there where they added some additional elevated land and added some additional parking north of their building. And what compensatory storage means is that every area that you fill or elevate, you have to compensate for that by providing equivalent compensatory storage. So what they're going to do, or proposing to do, is to construct a very, very large borrow area here that will essentially serve as a flood storage area, take fill material from that and elevate pads in this location. So the plan is to extend Coach Light Lane to this point, have building sites here and here, and have essentially a large borrow pit, storage area there that will store water that is actually in excess of what would be displaced by the buildings here. The theory with the floodway is that if you place buildings or obstacles in the floodway where you have moving floodwaters, that water's going to be deflected by those buildings or obstacles, which will raise the levels of floodwater on adjoining property. So what they must do is have an engineer demonstrate that their plan for putting buildings here will be compensated for by having additional flood storage capacity there, which will have a, have to demonstrate that it will have a net zero effect on downstream conditions. And so they have retained the services of the same engineering firm that prepared the flood maps for Salina, that certified our levees, and that did the flood study for the hotels, and their preliminary conclusion is that it is feasible to develop on this property if the compensatory storage is done as they propose.
And the ultimate conclusion, that is issuance of what Mr. Andrew referred to as a no-rise certificate, meaning flood elevation after this project won't rise in the same hundred-year storm event.
Right.
So, it leaves us compliant with the FEMA requirements. We're not ultimately doing this in contravention of those requirements.
Coach Light Lane was constructed before the last set of zoning changes. Any situation now where it would be required that further extensions of that road would have to be up above the, either the hundred-year flood?
There is no, there is no regulatory requirement in the city of Salina to elevate streets. The only requirement for elevation is building sites or building pads, because that is what is insured. So, we have a number of, they're not necessarily by design, but there are a number of neighborhoods in Salina where the streets flood or filled with water, and the dwellings or other buildings next to them are high and dry, and there could be a scenario where the water on Mulberry Creek rises enough where it covers portions of Coach Light Lane, but it doesn't touch or impact the buildings. And so, this drawing depicts Mr. Bakhtah's concept, which is to, Coach Light Lane ends about right here, he would extend it further. One thing we don't have on Coach Light Lane today is any kind of cul-de-sac turnaround, so he would be providing that, and then his plan would be to have two development sites, and then this would be a very large compensatory storage area where floodwaters would be stored and then released as conditions allow. But the theory is that if you elevate this, you compensate for that by creating more storage for floodwaters there.
And just one last, thank you for that explanation. One last extension of the liability. To what degree do our police and fire departments have to attempt to get through a flooded roadway? I know it's a rather theoretical question.
Yeah, I don't know that there's a hard and fast rule. I mean, we make an assessment of our, the situation, the equipment, and our abilities, but we'll make every reasonable effort, number one, to forewarn and avoid, especially in a commercial situation, someone being in that situation, but we would try to render aid if, in an emergency situation.
So our liability base generally would end when we'd be putting our own staff in unnecessary harms way?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know of a hard and fast rule where we take on liability for, you know, a certain discretionary decision in terms of when we offer aid and when we don't. Part of it's going to be the magnitude of the flood and staffing and the availability of staff and equipment, and what we end up doing is standing up an emergency operations center, we'll then put together a response plan, and it, event by event, storm by storm, we would have to prioritize and make those kind of decisions.
Okay.
You know, and not to overstate it and not to go on too long, but in any given flooding event, if you, if there's a train involved, if there's, you know, storage containers, fuel, that could completely take priority over responding to something else in another part of the community.
Just for the commission's benefit, what I have on the screen is the plan that was approved for the hotel site directly to the west, or east, excuse me, and this building right here is currently under construction, and this is phase two, planned phase three. So, this site plan was approved as part of the floodway variance request for the hotel developer, and was also approved by the Kansas Division of Water Resources. And so, Mr. Bakhtah's property, this is Coach Light Lane, it terminates right here, his property is directly here. And so, his, he came forward with this plan because he viewed that as a logical extension of this already existing approved commercial development, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the public?
I'm a retired environmental scientist, and I studied land use and water, so that's kind of my background. So, when we talk about developing in a floodplain, that's always a concern, and the floodway is, to me, it's kind of alarming. And I understand that the development was initiated all in that area before the floodplain was mapped. And I, you know, it's, the attractiveness of extending that commercial area is obvious. However, I am concerned about, one, that the hotel was allowed to be rebuilt, and that, you know, future potential flood damage could render it a blight, which is kind of, you know, would be a shame for the investment that's already made there. But, one thing that I have found is that with the floodplain regulations and development in floodplain, that cumulative effects are not calculated. We just take case by case, and, you know, when the Corps of Engineers did all their channeling, that, you know, and reclaiming wetlands, reclaiming wetlands, that created a lot of problems, because they lacked the foresight to protect those areas. So, I just kind of hate to see good money go after bad and to, and to continue to develop in areas that should not have really been developed in the first place. And if we, if we do this one, then what's next? You know? I thought that the 2010 decision was overdue. It was a good one, and I'm kind of disappointed to see it being backtracked on now, nine years later. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Is there a representative for Mr. Bakhtah here? Or, didn't, what? If you wanted to make any comments, you don't have to, but, okay, thank you. Will?
I've got one, just one more question for staff, if I may. Mr. Andrew, so, the lot that's already zoned commercial, that's got the hotel property going up on it, there's two more additional planned phases for that property, correct?
Correct.
So there will be a total of three hotels on that site?
Perhaps, two hotels and a restaurant building, but there's, there's
Three buildings.
Only the first two buildings have identified uses, and those are both motels.
Okay.
And the theory under that approval is, in the floodway, there's really two options for any, the general rule is no development is permitted, but the two exceptions are what is called the one-for-one replacement rule, and in that case, there were three existing buildings already there, and the engineer demonstrated that replacing those three with three buildings that would displace equivalent amount of floodwater and that were elevated was essentially a no-net change from what was there before, and in this case, the other option is to excavate and create compensatory storage to store the floodwaters to have no net change in the floodway performance. And so, those are the two options, and then this is the, this is the big picture. And so, all of the lime green is conservation area, we are simply focused on this piece right here, and if the question was, where does it stop, my answer would be, it would certainly stop here, because that's the only remaining piece that's inside the city limits that has service from existing city utilities. None of that other green area has road access or utilities or is inside the city limits, so we're talking about an incremental change, but not a large-scale change in this instance.
And obviously, the property owner doesn't have any obligation to improve Coach Light Drive so that its elevation makes it a more secure bet during times of flooding, correct?
Correct. The, the history of Coach Light Lane is that Coach Light Lane was built by KDOT, and it was built by KDOT as a frontage road, because when they built I-70, they cut off access to a farmhouse, and so they built this asphalt road from North Ninth Street back to the farmhouse. The city allowed some development to occur on that road, then in 1982, the City Commission approved a special assessment benefit district to upgrade Coach Light Lane to a city street standard and assess the cost of that to all the abutting owners. So, it would be difficult to ask the existing owners to redesign and rebuild Coach Light Lane, but that could be a potential condition of approval, but it would impact certainly more than the applicant.
And I guess my last question would be with the amount of rain we've received here in the last month or so, did we have any issues with anything surrounding the current hotel that's being built or anything?
We do. We showed this to the Planning Commission, so we can, we can show them to you, but this is a photograph of, this is a sign we posted on the property saying it was proposed for rezoning. This is the parking lot, or adjacent to the parking lot, that was constructed for the hotel site. This is Mr. Bakhtah's property present at that time. Those pictures were taken in May, and so, again, the idea is that he would, the property that's to the right, he would elevate and get it above the flood levels, and the property closest to the stream would be used for storage. At this time, there was some backwater on Mr. Bakhtah's property, but Mulberry Creek was not actually out of its banks, and this is the erosion sediment control for the hotel site, and that is Mulberry Creek in the background. And so, it was not out of its banks or up into the hotel site, but this was backwater storage along Coach Light Lane there, and this water here is coming from north of I-70 along Diamond Drive, comes underneath I-70 and tries to get to Mulberry Creek, and it was backed up at that particular time. But those were photos that we went out and took in the earlier part of May. The closer to Memorial Day in those times, there was not any standing water on the property. So we didn't, we didn't take any additional pictures, but this is from the early part of May.
And the design storm is commonly referred to as the hundred-year storm event. Dean, do you, have you heard a characterization of that rain event relative to a hundred-year storm event?
I, I have not, but the only, the only place where it was close again was Mulberry Creek in 2007, when this area flooded, it was a one-hundred-year flood on Mulberry Creek, and this, this did not reach the 2007 levels in terms of the elevations on Mulberry Creek.
Does the flood storage, I'll call it a pit for lack of a better term, is that gathering water from, that would only have been settling on that property itself, or does it become?
Well, the
Because it's down low, I mean, does it just start draining water from?
The flood ma, the flood models show that the biggest, the biggest obstructions on Mulberry Creek are the I-70 bridge over Mulberry Creek and the North Ninth Street bridge over Mulberry Creek. In certain flooding conditions, they serve almost as dams, and the water here then becomes in a backwater condition and actually starts going in a backwater condition and actually starts going backwards. And so, what happens in a 100-year flood is Mulberry Creek is coming along here, it's trying to go here, but the water's backing up, so then it decides to go straight down Stimmel Road, and it actually flows down Stimmel Road across Ohio and goes over to the Saline River that way, instead of trying to get north of I-70. So, when the flooding occurs here, it's usually backwater that's backing up and coming up into this area. And so, those obstructions that are creating the backwater condition are the I-70 Bridge, the North Fifth Street Bridge, and particularly the North Ninth Street Bridge. So, you would literally have to take out, perhaps elevate, or redesign the Ninth Street Bridge to provide more flow capacity under the bridge to eliminate some of those backwater conditions. But, a lot of the flooding that occurs there is because the water is backing up. And the one thing that we observed was, there was no backwater on Mulberry Creek, at least at that time. Everything was still flowing towards the north and towards I-70. The water was not backing up. And so, the greatest extent of flooding occurs when Ninth Street essentially serves as a dam, and the water starts backing up to the west.
I guess my final question is, because if I understand it correctly, the zero-for-zero means that the holding pond holds the amount of water that would have been displaced by the property that's being built. So, it does not create additional issues for surrounding properties, is that correct?
What they require, and there's only a handful of engineers in the state who will do it, but it requires an engineer to put his stamp on a, what's called a no-rise certificate, that that engineer is certifying that the design that they have stamped will cause no rise in flood levels on Mulberry Creek. And that means no rise. And so, what they're saying is that if we elevate the property next to I-70, so it's above the flood elevation, and we put buildings on it, that's gonna push water onto other properties in a 100-year flood. But if we build the compensatory storage that we have designed, that will basically result in no net change.
So, it could still flood, just not any worse than it would have before?
Yeah, they're not, it's not, they're just, there's, you don't, you have no net negative impact. It's not solving the flooding problem, but I will say that the hotel that's under construction out there is about two and a half, almost three feet higher in elevation than the hotel that it replaced. And it was noticeably that it was very well protected from the current flooding going around in the surrounding areas. And the reason that the Bakhter property was underwater was because its natural elevation, it was about three and a half to four feet lower than the hotel site. And the engineer's solution for that is to elevate the property next to I-70, equivalent to the elevation of the hotel site, and to excavate next to the stream to create place for the floodwater to go.
Well, I think we've examined this thoroughly. Any...
You ready for a motion, Mayor?
I'm ready for a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 19-11002, amending the future land use designation of the 6.31 acre tract of land located at the west end of Coach Light Lane from conservation area to a commercial area on first reading.
Second?
We moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-11002. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to one. And now, 8.2, please.
Item 8.2, application number Z19-6, requesting a change in zoning district classification from A1 agricultural to C7 highway commercial on a 6.31 acre tract of land located at the west end of Coach Light Lane, west of North Ninth Street and south of I-70, and addressed as 635 Coach Light Lane. Item 8.2A, first reading, ordinance number 19-11003.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a companion application to the one we just heard. The application you just heard was the bigger-picture philosophical question about whether this should be developable property or not. We were talking about the zoning classification of that same 6.31 acre tract. It's currently owned by Nandor LLC out of Denver, Colorado. Mr. Bakhter has a contract to purchase the property, and it was annexed into the city in 1971, but is unplatted and zoned A1 for agricultural purposes. So, he has submitted this companion application to rezone this property from agricultural to C7 highway commercial, and he also submitted a preliminary plat of the property to the Planning Commission. His proposal is to create two lots for commercial uses, and he's trying to target uses that would serve the traveling public on I-70. And related to your previous action, your role in this case to determine whether this tract of land is more suitable for commercial development or continued agricultural use. Our C7 district is a district that is designed to accommodate uses that serve the traveling public, particularly our interstate system. And as you can see on the map on the screen, much of the surrounding area, including the hotel site, is zone C7, and this property has an A1 designation. And so, as we reported, most of the area along North Ninth and North Fifth, between the flood control levee and I-70, is in the floodway overlay district. A large portion of this is shown as conservation area. A lot of the development that occurred out in this area occurred before the maps went into effect in 1986. A floodway is defined as a channel of a water course, in this case Mulberry Creek, and the adjacent land areas, which must be reserved in order to discharge the 100-year flood without cumulatively increasing the water surface elevation more than one foot. New construction is generally prohibited unless approved as a variance in certification received by, from a professional engineer is provided, demonstrating that the encroachments will not result in any increase in flood levels within the floodway. And it does require that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve a floodway variance. As I noted, Mr. Bakhter has not yet filed a variance application. He would need to do so before he could actually develop this property, but staff advised him that he should first file his rezoning application to see if the Planning Commission and City Commission viewed this as developable property. If this request is approved, the possibility still exists that the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Kansas Division of Water Resources could decline to approve a development permit. The applicant will need to invest in more detailed engineering studies and analysis before development can proceed. But based on the preliminary reports that he has, the applicant believes this property is feasible to be developed for commercial purposes if the building sites are elevated and compensatory storage is provided. He believes it's more suitable for interstate-oriented commercial development than ag use. This particular property and the property directly to the east, where the hotel's under construction, were added to the city's neighborhood revitalization area in 2015, and are, were included in the neighborhood revitalization on the updated plan adopted in 2018. So, in terms of the characteristics, this property is directly adjacent to commercial redevelopment that's already underway, and it would be a logical extension of the existing C7-zoned area. There is a water line that was, exists that runs along the north bank of Mulberry Creek, and there's a new eight-inch water line that serves the hotel that ties back to North Street, and they create a looped system, and the applicant plans to build on that. There's an existing 10-inch sewer that also runs along the north bank of Mulberry Creek, and that can be extended and tied into by the applicant's development. There was a drainage study that was submitted as part of the plat, but the compensatory storage area is many, many times larger than what would be needed just for stormwater detention purposes for a commercial development. The I-70 section here carries 17,700 vehicles a day. North Ninth Street carries 7,000 vehicles today. Coach Light Lane is a public-named street, and the applicant is proposing to extend that and to construct a cul-de-sac at the end of it. As to the comprehensive plan, you had just addressed that in your previous item, and that was placed first on your agenda, so you could act on the land use question first. The Planning Commission considered this at their May 21 meeting. They voted five to one to recommend approval of the requested zoning change from agricultural to C7. And part of their reasoning was that this site is more suitable for commercial development than continued agricultural use due to its proximity and orientation to I-70, the fact that it's already in the city limits, and is located within a designated revitalization area. The applicant has hired an engineer who has concluded that it's feasible to develop a portion of this site and still confirm with FEMA floodway regulations. It's adjacent to existing C7-zone property. Existing public utilities can be extended to serve the development, and the Planning Commission concluded that an amendment to the land use map was justified in these circumstances due to the location of the property in relation to I-70 and existing commercial land use areas. So, your options on this item would be to concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, approve the attached ordinance that would change the classification of the property. That would be subject to plating of the property by the applicant. You could refer this back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration, giving them the reasons for your disagreement. Or you could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and decide that agricultural zoning should remain in place. That would require four votes at today's meeting. So, if you approve the attached ordinance on first reading, second reading would be deferred until Mr. Bakhter satisfactorily plats the property. So, for Mr. Bakhter, this is the first step. He would need to complete the plating of the property and have his infrastructure plans in place. Then, he would have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals to see if they will grant a floodway variance, and also get a permit from the Division of Water Resources. And so, should the variance not be approved, or a development permit not be granted by Kansas Division of Water Resources, he will have a commercial lot, but it will remain vacant if he can't meet their criteria.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Andrews? Any questions, comments from the public? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 19-11003, changing the zoning classification of this property from A1 to C7 on first reading, subject to satisfactory plating of the property.
Second?
We moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-11003 on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to one. And we now have other business.
I have a few items for other business, Mayor Davis. I just wanted to follow up on a few things, some of which I think you mentioned in your city manager's update. The first one is, last year, when we were doing the Ninth Street project with the curb and gutter and the removal of the trees, I know we had discussions at that time about how the public, the property owners were notified, and I just wondered if we had implemented some of those suggestions and addressed some of those concerns from last year's project, and how exactly we were notifying the property owners this year.
We have had those conversations. I'm gonna put Jim Coach on the spot a little bit in terms of, from our conversations, what we've been able to implement with the contractor. I know there is notice requirements imposed on the contractor, but Jim may have more details.
Right. Last year, it was particularly an issue when we had sidewalk or driveways removed, or milling and lanes closed in front of properties. The only phase of the project that is actually underway right now is the tree removal, and the tree removal is considered a mobile operation. They trim the trees, they load the trees, and then they move. And they haven't necessarily, and they don't know how much they'll get done in a day, so they're not necessarily giving three days' notice like we try to on the more permanent construction activities. They did have a few instances where people needed to get out of their driveways. They simply told the folks that they needed out, and they let them out. So, it was unfortunate if someone's had some problems out there, but it's considered a mobile operation, so we haven't really fully implemented the two- or three-day notice that we intend to when we get into more permanent construction.
And I don't know if we've ever done this in the past, but is it ever a possibility, just to put a post-it note on someone's door saying that, you know, pardon our progress, but you may find your access to your driveway limited at points during the next several days, so they at least kind of have a, even if it's not specific to the day or the hour, that they at least understand that during this construction project, they might not be able to access their driveway, or they might need to ask staff to...
It wouldn't take a lot to give some additional foresight.
I mean, just something general.
You know, the next tree's marked, you know, pretty much where they're headed, so...
Right, right.
We have done door hangers in the past, and part of it's just...
Right.
Trying to correctly anticipate the schedule, but we do try to get notice out in advance.
Okay, and then when we...
We've also talked about, the most up-to-date way to provide information is probably the website, but that imposes a burden on the property owners, or the residents, to check the website.
Right. And so, when we do get to the point where we're talking about sidewalk, driveway, the milling, and all of that kind of stuff that's going to continue to limit access to people's properties, is that, do we provide that notice, or does the contractor provide that notice?
It's in the contract for the contractor to provide notice.
I got you.
Right. So, our conversation has been, how can we be more proactive in getting that notice out? How can we word it better to communicate that it may be subject to change?
And then we do try to provide advance notice on the website when we know we're gonna be switching sides, or closing an additional block, or making a significant change, much like we've done downtown.
Gotcha. Well, and, you know, maybe, I don't know that it would be able to be pursued for this project at this point in its execution, but maybe in the future, that's something where we even have a social media page, or just a page on the website saying, if you want the most up-to-date projections of when we're getting to you...
That's been our conversation, that's our intention. We're just not to the point of that phase of construction, and this mobile approach is more flexible, but as we get into the road construction, that's our intention.
Great, thank you. My next question is about AdAstra or 67401 Plaza. I did receive this spreadsheet with the construction, the hard construction costs, and thank you for that. I would like to follow up at some point, just on the number of staff hours that were devoted to that project. I don't know that I need a specific dollar amount assigned to that labor, but I just would like to follow up, because I noticed that the, that I don't think that that estimate included any labor on that project.
Yeah, I don't know, that's not something that we typically track or quantify, but we'll see what we can come up with.
Okay, thank you. And then, following up... And then, following up on our strategic planning session from several weeks ago, I was wondering where we stood with Patty Gentrup or Ms. February, as Dr. Davis calls her, if we'd received any updates from Ms. Gentrup.
I've got a draft from her, and so it's on me. It's in my inbox, but I've yet to review it and give her feedback and then distribute it. So, it's been lingering in my inbox as I've been trying to deal with budget and other things.
Oh, those budgets, they get in the way of more progress, don't they?
Well, as you try to go through it in the level of detail that we are, it eats a lot of meeting data.
Yes, if I could piggyback on that, I won't speak for the other three, but I guess I would like to have that before we sit down to do the initial six-month...
Sure.
...performance review, just so that we're sort of moving in one smooth direction.
Makes sense. That shouldn't be a problem.
All right. And before you read that, if I could, I don't know whether this notice was distributed to, in the public brochure or not, about the ribbon cutting this Friday, actually. Yep, this Friday, for the can cycle, bike, bike sharing. It's, it's a, I was gonna call it a little step, but it's a, it's a nice big step in increasing the exercise options in town, the connectedness. It's a different way to get around other than driving a car. For a lot of us, it's real exercise, not, I guess working video games should be considered a sport, but it's probably not high on the exercise list. And the Center Street Park dedication, I think there's something in there for everyone of every age, so this, no one here should be able to go there and not find something to do. So you can ride your bike down there and get more exercise. But these are just little steps that I'm hoping will slowly advance the culture of healthy choices here in Solana. So we're, we're moving forward, step by step.
Yeah, I would underscore the Olivia's Playground at Center Street. It feels like it's in a neighborhood, and people might assume that it's a neighborhood park, but it is very much a destination park, given what they've done in terms of the improvement. So it's worth a resident's effort to find it and go there. It's a terrific park.
My niece got to meet Olivia, and when she realized, you know, that an eight-year-old would come out and speak publicly and be as optimistic as she is, she went home and said, "Gosh, I guess I don't have any excuse for not getting anything done in life." So it was very nice that she could be here in Solana for that. All righty.
Is there, I don't know what the subject is about the executive session, is there any way that we can be any more specific about beyond the legal acts, aspects of circumstances potentially requiring authorization of expenditures under the authority of the City Manager with legal counsel? Or is that sufficient subject? I guess you, you must think it is sufficient subject, since you wrote the, wrote the motion.
That was my thought. Anytime we propose a motion of that nature, part of it has to do with needing to be sure that the governing body has the opportunity to learn of the subject in more detail as it might relate to the statement of the subject. It would seem as though if there is a concern or a question about that, that that is probably the first order of business if we are, if we choose to recess. If there is a desire to describe that in more detail on the part of the Commission, we can certainly, and maybe we should make the initial conversation short enough that we'd have opportunity to come right back out and, and either go back in on the same motion or a different one.
All right. So if I were to make a motion for an executive session for five minutes, would that, would that give you enough time to bring us up to date on what we're discussing? And whether or not we need to extend or discuss it out here?
Yeah, I can give you a five-minute update as a starting point.
And I, yes, I think we can do that easily.
Okay. Do I still read the same motion, only specifying the five minutes?
In this case, I suppose we should technically modify that motion...
Okay.
...to refer to the question of whether the proposed motion adequately speaks to the subject of the ultimate executive session.
All right. I'll give this a stab, and if it's, if it's not what you want to hear...
Before you do, knowing our history as five minutes, a realistic, that goes by awfully fast.
In light of, I think, the limited topic that you're trying to cover, I guess that gives me two and a half minutes and you two and a half minutes, so, but yeah, I think we can, I think I can at least lay the subject out for you, and then you can come back in open session and choose a course of action.
But given it is an attorney-client privilege-based executive session, you might want to throw a couple of minutes in there for me as well.
We're gonna not be adding round numbers again, so I'm gonna have to look through the guide style.
Eight, eight minutes.
Eight minutes, okay. I move the City Commission recess into executive session for eight minutes to discuss whether the proposed motion adequately is addressed in relation to the ultimate executive session that we're going to go into under. That sounds awful. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 6:05 PM? 6:05 PM?
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second it to recess into executive session for eight minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four and up.
Mayor, if I may, I might add, just anybody that might be paying attention or concerned, we will certainly limit this initial discussion to the question posed.
Now, we will call the meeting back into regular session. I will propose that we take a five-minute break, recess, and then resume the meeting. This is not an executive session, it's just stretch your legs. All right, now call the meeting back into regular session.
I move that the City Commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the city manager's administrative authority in response to the detection and isolation of asbestos materials at Fire Station Number Two basement and in the basement stairwell. Oh, sorry, and with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with attorneys for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2, the open meeting will resume in this room at 6:45 PM.
Second.
Moved in second at to recess into executive session for 30 minutes. For the reasons stated, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, if I could add a couple of things, there is the possibility of public action coming out of this executive session, and for anyone that's here for the Qualic B meeting, it will start just as soon as we wrap up the City Commission meeting, we'll roll into the Qualic B meeting.
Thank you.
Getting back into regular session, uh, back, I think. We're good?
Sure.
I'm just going to call a couple of staff people for the next minute.
Oh, okay.
Does it take five minutes to switch out discs and be ready?
Hmm. We have had discussion and do have some action to be proposed.
Okay.
Mayor Davis, I move that the city manager's purchasing authority in response to the detection and isolation of asbestos material on Fire Station Number Two basement and basement stairwell surfaces be expanded to 50,000, including the costs required in order to: One, contact tract for cleanup by a certified asbestos contractor based upon the city manager's assessment of all relevant factors; two, contract for post-clean-up testing based upon the city manager's assessment of all relevant factors; and three, continue the engagement and utilization of the services of the law firm of Foley and Mansfield as special counsel, as in the city manager's discretion may be necessary to address the city's interests in the matter.
Second, we've been moved and seconded to increase the city manager's purchasing authority for this specific purpose. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries forward as nothing. And I understand we have a few minutes break to allow.
Correct. They need to switch over, I guess, recording discs to be ready for the next meeting.
All right.
So then we actually need five minutes.
So then we actually need to adjourn this meeting.
Shall we?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I just put at your place the, uh, the package for.
Is it the same? I already had one printed out.
Same, no, it changed. Okay.
Actually, I think I can give you.